Good evening, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Yes. Member Ashby, member Warren, member Harris, member Hanson, member Chenier, member Guerra, Vice Mayor Jennings, member Carr, Mayor Steinberg.
Here, a quorum has been established. I would like to ask the following people to please come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Three esteemed people. Louise Williams, retired employee for 32 years with the city of Sacramento, the first director of the Oak Park Community Center and the Robertson Community Center. I'd like Louise to come up along with Acting Today Police Chief Mike Bray, Deputy Police Chief Mike Bray, as well as Mervyn Brookins, who heads the Grant Youth Sports Association. Please all come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Williams, if you stand right there, wherever you want, and we look at the flag that way, okay? There we go. You start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Very good, everyone. Members, we have a relatively light agenda tonight, and without objection, I know we've conferred with a number of you, without objection, we'd like to change a little bit of the order. Given the events of the past 24 hours regarding the police issues in North Sacramento, I'd like to have Chief Bray come up and report to the council and the community on what has transpired over the last 24 hours. I know I want to make a statement, and then I want to open it up for public comment so that we can hear from the public on these issues, but for all other issues as well. Please note that tonight we're going to take public comment before the items on the agenda, not after. So if you want to testify on anything, please fill out a slip now so as to not miss your opportunity. Chief, I want to welcome you and thank you for your good work, not just over the last 24 hours, but especially over the last 24 hours. I turn it over to you for a report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Mike Bray. I'm one of your deputy chiefs of police for the Sacramento Police Department. I'm here to present a brief overview, kind of a snapshot, of the progress of the incident that occurred last night in the North Sacramento neighborhood of Del Paso Heights at Cypress Street and Grand Avenue. As I'm sure everyone has seen the videos, they are disturbing to watch and concerning to me as a Sacramento police officer, so please know that. I would have or like to take a quick step back and provide a little context to our response of the incident. I'm not going to go into the incident itself since that's been out on video. I know, I'm assuming everybody has seen it. Immediately after this incident, our patrol supervisor responded, in addition to several other officers, to assist. The patrol supervisor, who's a sergeant, took control of the scene and began a use-of-force investigation. And this occurs any time we have an officer use of force, whether that be a firearm, a baton, pepper spray, significant struggle, any of that sort of thing. A patrol supervisor responds and takes control of the scene and evaluates the situation and begins a use-of-force investigation. The supervisor contacts witnesses, involved officers, looks at evidence, and reviews in-car camera footage. This incident was filmed by one of our in-car cameras as it occurred in the middle of Cypress Street at Grand Avenue. As the sergeant responded, he immediately, like I said, contacted folks who were on the scene and then looked at the officer, involved officer's, in-car camera video. The sergeant was very disturbed at what he saw on video. It looked to him to be an out-of-policy use of force. The supervisor did what we trained him to do, is he contacted his supervisor, which is the watch commander, which is a rank of lieutenant who manages the entire city per shift. The sergeant contacted the watch commander, advised him of his findings. The lieutenant then viewed the footage as well and had the same response, that it appeared very concerning to him in terms of policy. The lieutenant on scene then contacted our North Area Captain, Captain Seifert, who's seated over to my right, to advise her of his findings and that the sergeant and lieutenant both felt that it was, appeared to be, an inappropriate use of force. Captain Seifert called me at home. We began talking about the incident. At this time, a witness who happened to view this use of force videotaped it and loaded the video onto Facebook, and so it began to go about the community. This was about 6:00 PM. The use of force, the incident itself, happened about 5:08 PM. Captain Seifert and I talked about the incident. She saw the footage. As she came into the station, she felt it was inappropriate as well, and at that time I contacted our Internal Affairs Division and had them respond from home to launch an administrative investigation of the use of force. The intent for that was also to place the officer on administrative leave that evening. So that was done last night. As our officers began the administrative investigation, we also determined that the person we had arrested, the charges did not appear to be suitable, and we began the process to get the person released from jail. So I directed a sergeant go to the Sacramento County Jail, contact the deputies there, and do what's called an 849B release, which is a process of dropping criminal charges to get the person released from jail. He was released from jail later that evening, about 2:40 in the AM. Our media folks came into work also and began drafting a detailed press release of this incident. That was very descriptive, and that release went out late last night, early this morning. As we continued to review the incident last night and into this morning, we had significant concerns over again over not just the administrative and policy end of things, but that our officers' actions could possibly be criminal. And so we initiated a criminal investigation that will run concurrent with the administrative investigation. At the completion of the criminal investigation, our findings will be handed over to the District Attorney's Office for their review. Additionally, besides the two investigations, we're also reviewing our training to determine if our training, starting from the academy level, is still at a state and nationwide standard. So we're reviewing to confirm that we're doing the right thing with our officers, and if we need to make changes, we're going to do those as well. This afternoon, the Office of Public Safety Accountability and the Mayor's Office facilitated a meeting with some leaders of the North, of the Del Paso Heights community, and at that meeting I shared all of the information I'm sharing with you this evening. Lastly, we are very aware that this is a significant event, and quite frankly, it reflects poorly on our department. And we are doing our best to be swift in our response, in our actions. To that end, we have released the three of our in-car camera videos shortly before council began tonight, in addition to an updated press release, and so those went out at probably about 5:40, 5:45 this evening. And as we can complete the rest of the video downloads and redactions, there'll be a couple of other less critical pieces of in-car camera video that will be released.
Thank you very, very much. On behalf of the council, I'd like to make the following comments in response to what you just informed us. First of all, I want to begin by reiterating my comments this morning, what the police department has just said, and some of what my fellow council members in conversation have expressed today. Let's cut through and say it like it is. All of us were disturbed by what we saw in the camera phone video and in the just-released police video. From our police department to our city council and the entire community, what is wrong is wrong is wrong. As upsetting as the officer's actions are, it provides a new and a heightened opportunity for us to change culture and to change the relationships between the police department and our community, especially the relationship between our police department and our young African-American males. Culture change, please. Culture change starts at the top. I want to acknowledge our police department team for handling the aftermath of this incident in exactly the right way, the way the community has been asking for, the way the council has been asking for. It has been transparent, it has been swift, and it has reflected the same sentiment and desire for accountability as expressed by the community. I want to specifically acknowledge the police department's early decision to commence both an internal administrative investigation and a criminal investigation into the officer's actions. In addition to this, our Public Safety and Accountability Office is conducting an independent investigation and review. As you said a moment ago, but I think it is worth repeating so that people understand the timing of the events, because it speaks to the way you have dealt with this. The responding sergeant reviewed the in-car camera footage on scene and immediately knew that something was wrong. The sergeant reported the incident to the watch commander, which set in motion the chain of events that Acting Chief Bray has described that have led to a statement, release of video, and the ongoing investigations. And I want to note that while this was not an incident that would trigger the 30-day video release policy that the city council passed last November, our police department made the decision to release video of the incident before a full day has elapsed. The department, as you indicated, also reached out to the North Sacramento community leadership immediately, and the city remained in close contact with them and those close to the young man involved. And Vice Mayor Jennings, Chief Bray, Captain Seifert, the city manager Howard Chan, Assistant City Manager Arturo Sanchez, and I, together with Vice Mayor Jennings, met with numerous North Area community leaders today to listen to and confirm, and to ask whether we were missing any steps in ensuring complete transparency and accountability. While we acknowledge all the steps that have gone right in the aftermath of this incident, the nature of the confrontation begs an even more important question. Now, I want to conclude with this. This incident was caught on a community member's phone and put on Facebook. How often does this kind of incident occur when it is not captured on social media? I fear too often. No one wants to protect people engaged in criminal behavior, but we must also have a system that speaks for innocent people when they are wronged. There is, and let's acknowledge it, a specific culture problem here that we must address, and it's not just a Sacramento problem, it's a national problem. It is the relationships and interactions between law enforcement and our young African-American males predominantly. What are we going to do to change that culture? It is a profound issue here and throughout the country. Every interaction with law enforcement for all involved must begin and end with dignity and respect. Part of the answer must lie in building a police department that is focused on genuine community policing. Someone in today's meeting with the community said, and it was profound, that when the police know who the criminals are, they don't have to then fish and hassle innocent people going about their business. We must encourage our police officers to do even more, to get to know the leaders and members of our diverse neighborhoods even better. Some of that's a resource problem, but some of it is just a continued different way of doing business. We must find ways to more purposely engage and involve more police officers and youth in community activities in our communities. You know, we now have pop officers back, but we do not have true community policing, where the police have the time, where we have the resources, and they have the desire to genuinely get to know and spend time with the communities that they serve. A community policing approach to promote this engagement is crucial, so is transparency, accountability, and the consistent timely response to these sorts of incidents like we have seen today. The way the police department handled the last 24 hours is not only good for our police department, whose vast majority of members is comprised of incredibly dedicated professionals who serve our community very well, but the community itself, which wants and needs to feel that they are being protected in all ways by the police. So let's build together on these last 24 hours. We'd like to hear from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have 19 speakers signed up so far. As Mayor Steinberg announced, this is public comment, matters not on the agenda. We typically call three in a row. We'll do that first. First speaker is Mervyn Brookins, followed by Richard Owen, and then Betty Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I came here today to simply say thank you. We appreciated the time you took out today to explain, and Chief and Captain Seifert. It was very refreshing to see the response from the police department as well as the city. It's something new, something that our community has been asking for, accountability, and today we saw just that. So as I express, and again, Mayor, it's very, very refreshing to hear you reiterate some of the concerns that we have had in the meeting today, to know that you were listening, as well as the city manager. So today, in that regard, was a very good day towards rebuilding the trust between the city police and the community, and I just wanted to come forward today to say thank you, and let's build upon that trust, let's follow through with the things that were discussed today, and we're looking forward to having a better relationship with the city as well as the police department.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Richard Owen. I'm representing Lead along with Mark Harris. We too want to express our support for the way the city and the city council members and the police department have responded. Especially want to thank J. King, Councilman Alan Warren, who's not here, and Merv Brookins for the way that they kicked into gear last night when this was live and happening. Most everybody knew at that time. Despite those congratulations, let me also say, though, that that doesn't take away the fact that Nandi Kane took a beating last night. We need to be sure that we understand that. You know, my mother had an old saying that says, whatever you suppress will eventually express itself in terrible ways. What is it about black men that our police department is expressing when they do these kind of things? What is it that we don't know about the bias that they carry with them, whether they know it or not, that needs to be dealt with in the academy in a more effective and efficient manner? Okay? This gentleman should not have taken a beating because of jaywalking. There's much more serious issues to deal with in most of our communities than jaywalking, and I see it all the time. As a matter of fact, when I came to this meeting tonight, I saw three people jaywalking, okay? This officer, I might also add, is basically a rookie. He's been in this police department for two years, fresh out of the academy. What is it that this gentleman took away from that academy that caused him to have that reaction? We talked about this before, and I think the council has made tremendous strides in terms of authorizing the 40 hours of training and mental health training and so forth. But we raised the question then, and I'd like to raise it again. We need to inspect what we expect. Do you really know what's being taught at that academy? Do you know how it's inspected along the way? How frequently do they go back to that training to make sure that this doesn't happen again? Finally, let me say this. I'm not only co-chair of Lead, but I'm also a father of four black men, very successful black men that have had bad experiences like this themselves, and they've never been in trouble in their lives. I got involved because of them, because I don't want this to happen to any of my sons. You need to appreciate with the depth that most black parents feel, that every time our sons step out on the street and out of our sight, we are afraid for our children. We live in fear. And you need to understand the depth of our rage with regard to that. So when this happens, it just didn't happen to Nandi Kane, it happened to all of us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Owen. Thank you for your leadership.
Betty Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on this issue. I'd like to first by starting off by saying thank you. A lot of the concerns and what I originally wrote, you actually have addressed, and you've addressed in a timely manner. We didn't have to come up here and argue about having the video released within 30 days. My concerns are much like Richard. I'm a mother of three sons. If my sons are stopped by the city police or any police officer, and I get a text that they're being stopped by a simple traffic stop, unlike other individuals, mothers of African-American men, my fear is that they might not come home, they would die. So I wait until I get the final text that they're okay, and it's a simple text. My same concern comes with what was the mentality of the individual, of that particular police officer? What did he learn in the academy that made him feel that it was okay to do what he did to that individual for jaywalking? Thank God we're here because it was a jaywalking and not a killing, but the fact that a person can't walk down the street, getting off a bus, coming home from work, and being addressed should not be the common cause when it comes to African-American males. As NAACP, once that issue and the video started coming, our phones blew up. One of the things I have to tell you, Mayor and Vice Mayor Rick Jennings, I am disappointed in the fact that the NAACP wasn't called to the meeting today. Regardless of whether we live in North Sacramento or not, what you may not know, NAACP covers Galt to Yuba City, and so it doesn't matter whether we're part of that area, our phones blow up regardless, and we should have been part of that meeting. So with that, I am going to be asking for a full investigation and to be involved in the results of that investigation on what happened from beginning to end.
I take responsibility. We'll fix that. I'm sorry.
I thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next three speakers are Ashley Crabtree, Braden Murphy, and James Faygo Clark. Ashley?
Excuse me?
Hello, I'd like to talk about homeless. We're all here for a single reason, and that is to make Sacramento better. That is an effort that every one of you up there is actively fighting for. It is why you're sitting before us today. We have Ashby with equality and so on. So the question is, why are we out here? And the answer is exactly the same, to make Sacramento better. You are our eyes in the sky, and we are yours at ground level, and we come to speak once a week in hopes of sparking ideas. There's a famous quote, "Do not bring me problems, bring me solutions." That's great, but the problem is, is we out here are only one small portion to a very large puzzle. We can come with ideas, but it is your end that will be the glue that finishes the puzzle. When we come here, we speak about we, the people, but we, the people includes you as well. The Sacramento you serve is the same that we live in, the same one that Vinnie Collins and Michael Nunez died in. Had Sacramento's image and well-being not been important to you, you wouldn't be here. And the same goes for us out here. Together is where we make change, to compromise, to idea pitch, to communicate solutions to the, quote, "problem" that is not going to go away on its own. And together we can make that change because Sacramento deserves it. And Oz do all of its citizens, even the homeless ones. The first step is to treat the topic of homelessness as equally as important as equality for women by speaking earlier before the public, which we're doing today, and half of the council has to go home. The first step to, sorry.
You have another 30 seconds, okay?
By openly discussing possible solutions to an ever-growing problem. Only when we see printed facts on Sacramento's homeless population, like the beautiful spreadsheet done last week by Ashby on equality, will we be able to see what we are working with. The only way to find a solution to a problem is by facing it head-on and to stop pretending that the deaths of your citizens are a problem for another day. What would these people do tonight, or tomorrow, or all the days that we procrastinate providing help, since it's simply your easier thing to do?
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you so much for coming. Next?
Next speaker, Braden Murphy.
Can we help Mr. Murphy with the mic, please?
Well, although it's a kind of tragic events that kind of have brought everybody in here tonight, I am happy to hear that it's being dealt with and the mayor's attitude towards it is good, and also that so many people are here to stand up for what they know is wrong and what's been happening and want change, so that's good. And I also really appreciate the public comment being at the beginning, and I hope that happens more often and not just when something tragic like this has happened, so that people can speak before a reasonable hour and get involved in the process. I know Faygo is next to speak. He had me put him on the list, but he's at the rally for the tragic event that happened, so maybe because this is the first time this has happened, when people come in later, they could also be able to speak. So I think that's great, and I'm used to speaking about the homeless, and that's what I am passionate about, and that's what I'm here to speak about, but I wanted to make sure to address those other things. I talked to the mayor about getting my friend David Andre into some housing, figure out where he is on the voucher list, so if he could work with your staff to get that, that'd be great. He's here tonight, and I've been trying to get him to do that, to get himself help, for a while, but he doesn't want to do it because he doesn't want to cost his friend's apartment or a place to live. And I asked if I could speak on behalf of him to get some help tonight, and he said that would be okay. So I'm really looking forward to getting my good friend and buddy and pal, David Andre, off the streets, and somebody who is really good towards the other homeless people and is really making a difference. So I'd like to see that, and I'd like to see him be using as an example of the city council directly helping people get off the streets. And the most common thing when I'm out there helping feed the homeless and donating stuff that I have to the homeless, what do you guys want? They'd like a tent city for now, for immediate relief, until they can get into housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Braden. We will ask our team to help Mr. Andre, of course. Happy to meet after the meeting or tomorrow, whenever you want. We'll go to work in doing anything we can do, okay? Thank you for sticking up for him, Braden.
Okay, next three speakers are Jessica Murphy, Eric Frame, and Rashid Siddique.
Hello, Mayor and members of the council, and it's unfortunate that we have to do this depending on last night's events, and I just want to say, with that being said, we have a crowded audience right now, and now that there's most of the council members, I want to talk about when the public is speaking, that you're paying attention. I TV record the city council and pay attention to who's paying attention to me and who's not, in the disrespect that I see. So I just want to point that out. I actually do the research and look at when I speak and who's actually listening to me and showing me respect and showing other people that speak on public comment and who's listening. So you guys are getting better, but you can do a lot more. I also want to say, as a privileged white woman, it's unfortunate that happened last night, so thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Frame?
How to start? I like some good, there's some great comments from the public about the recent event, mainly, let's look into how we're training these cops everywhere in the entire nation, because it seems everywhere in the U.S. we have a shoot-first or tackle-first, ask questions later policy. So let's try and change that up and look into the training, if you guys are willing. So let's try and change that up and look into the training, if you guys are willing. Let's go into homelessness. Mr. Warren, in 1999, you voted no to the no camping ordinance, and the reason you said that and voted no is because you said it was inhumane. Now suddenly, well, we have a no camping ordinance, and it seems we can't get rid of it. I'm wondering what changed in between 1999 and now? Is it perhaps a shorter leash that you're on or something? I don't know. Oh, let's go back to the other issue, too. I'm not sure what the penalty was for this cop yet. So far, it seems he's on a paid vacation for a day?
Being investigated.
They're investigating? Okay.
Excuse me?
I would like to, I mean, I'm sure this idea's been thrown around, but we need some sort of third-party institution or maybe public people group that can look into and do a real investigation as opposed to an internal affair, maybe we can trust them, maybe we can't, investigation. What more? Love revolution, everybody.
Rashid Siddique, followed by Ramona Landeros, then Mac Worthy.
Rashid Siddique, and first of all, I want to thank the mayor for the meeting at lunch today and addressing the issue that happened yesterday in Del Paso Heights. I'm a graduate from Grant High School, and too often, this is happening in our neighborhood, and we're not treated as tax-paying citizens that should be protected by the police. And I'd like to also commend you guys for coming in and facing us and talking about some of the wrongs that were done yesterday. But what I can't help to think about, this could have been a death. You know, instead of him, I'm almost glad he used his hands instead of grabbing his gun. And that's sad to say. And this is a police department that's supposed to protect us, but I don't feel protected. I'm feeling that fear, and I'm grown, and I work every day, and, you know, and I pay my taxes just like everyone else. And there's an issue if black men in our communities don't feel protected by the people we're paying to protect us. And so I think there's something that needs to be done about the hiring practices, about the folks who are policing our community, and making sure, whether it's a psych evaluation, whether, I don't, you know, we have to talk about what happens, but I think there needs to be more people that looks like us that's policing us in our own community. And I think too often, we have folks that are fearing us, and they approach us with fear instead of trying to protect us. And so I don't know what the exact solution is, but I know we need to talk about it and not just put it underneath the rug. But I commend you for at least bringing it to the forefront, and I thank everyone for participating today. Thank you.
Thank you, Rashid.
Landeros?
Ramona?
I heard my name.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilmen. I have a cold, so my voice is a little bit raspy, so I hope you can understand me. I'm Ramona Landeros, and I'm a longtime resident of the Del Paso Heights community. I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, a community advocate, and a trustee for the Twin Rivers Unified School District. As trustees, we have thirty-five thousand children under our charge. When an incident like this occurs, what do we tell our children? Education does not just happen in the schools, but it happens in our communities, in our homes. Our children are on spring break right now, and it did occur during the daytime, so I was very concerned, very disturbed. I hope, can you hear me okay?
We hear you fine.
Thank you. But I want to thank you, Mayor, for taking charge and really handling this swiftly. To me, this is my idea of a strong mayor. Thank you for that, and thank you for the rest of you that were involved in taking quick action. I also want to be very clear that we do have some very good policemen and policewomen on the force, and I want to commend Captain Cypher. She has been very instrumental in coming out and doing outreach and really trying to work with the community. I think we have a ways to go, but my concern is also about the pre-documented, or as some folks call the undocumented, families who may not want to report abuses for fear of going to jail or being documented. So I just want to be the voice for those folks that will not step forward and report crimes like this. So again, we as a community will remain vigilant, will continue to work with the police department. I love the city, and I know that Sacramento is better than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ramona.
Next is Mac Worthy, followed by Anna Maria, then Wanda.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council. I see things a little different, maybe because I'm older, anywhere I raised up at. I had a relative killed on the force, and I had a classmate, I had a classmate shoot a retarded boy, point blank, kill him. This is part of the black folk. We don't have a neighborhood here, and that's one of the problems. We have blacks at large here. Blacks have never chose no leader, nowhere in America, in a neighborhood. Nowhere. No voting process, nowhere. We cannot sustain ourselves in leadership with nonprofit organizations. As the mayor said, what is wrong is wrong. We have some wrong things in our neighborhood, in black folks, too. Nobody on the beat come here and said a word. Why? But yet you talk about training. These people here is not on the beat. You need to get the people here to talk to these folks that's out there. Some of the training you're talking about, why can't you go to places for your training and sit down and talk to them and ask them questions? You don't want that. You want the brass in you all to make decisions. Not gonna happen, people. It's not gonna happen. This could happen anywhere. Sorry that it happened, but it can happen at any time, because you're dealing with a law enforcement. And you're dealing with black people that cannot stand up and tell the police face-to-face what is wrong. They take little nickels and dimes as hopper grassness, and then those are the people going to deal with the police department? No, people. It does not happen that way. You got to have people that's out there, young men, young black men have been involved in crime. I cherish them to come to me and let's sit down and talk, and let's go on Auburn Boulevard and talk to the FBI agent. They don't want that. They want us to come in here and say, well, we're gonna give you a program. You cannot give a program to stop crime in this country. You got to employ people to curb crime.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
And black people are gonna have to get off their lazy behinds, instead of their voting system, the church, and these nonprofit organizations, and get involved in law enforcement.
Thank you, sir.
Anna Maria?
Anna Maria?
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Anna Maria Rogelmo Munoz.
Can you just move to the middle, I think, so that we can hear you?
Now?
It's better, yes.
So I've been a homeless advocate now for a number of years, and I've come to know Haas. And I've come before you tonight. As you can see, this gentleman can barely walk. He's got ulcers on his legs. He is being harassed by SACPD on a regular basis. He's being harassed by other people. And what I'm asking you is to, if you can get him into some motel tonight or something, and to we can figure something out, this man has been very emotional, and he cannot take the abuse anymore. SACPD threatens to arrest him for indecent exposure, for holes in his clothing. He wears a size seven X, and we're trying very hard to get him clothing. I've started a fund on Facebook for him to go out and buy him clothing. In the meantime, SACPD wants to arrest him for indecent exposure, and they call him a pervert. Haas, can you speak to that, please? Tell them.
No, we're gonna...
Let him tell you.
Go ahead, sir, briefly, okay?
Yeah, they say that they're gonna arrest me and make me registered as a sex offender because there's holes in my pants, and I can't afford none to get on my own. And they mess with me every day.
Okay.
Can you do something for me, please?
And you need housing, obviously.
Yes.
And you need assistance. Okay, let us try again. We'll ask our staff tonight to meet with you this evening, and we'll do our very best to see if we can get you some sort of emergency help to begin with and do everything that we can do. This is why this is such a compelling problem and issue in this community. Arturo Sanchez, our assistant city manager, is right here. He will help you, okay? We'll do our very best.
Can you please speak to your police department and tell them to not harass people like this? This man is not a pervert, and we cannot have him go to jail on something that is not his fault. SACPD certainly has some very severe issues, and compassion is not what they don't have compassion.
Well, let us get right to the heart...
Very upset, I'm sorry.
No, I understand. Let us just get right to the heart of trying to help you find the housing and services that you need, okay? Beginning tonight, we'll do our best. I know you've got a great, we've got a great team, they'll do anything for a human being in need.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Wanda, followed by Ray Vanderworth.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and city council. I first wanted to say thank you with your guidance, and I spoke with the young lady over my parking tickets, and she has been able to get them expunged. I appreciate. It made me very happy. Thank you. And we gotta continue working on this homeless issue. If we can at least get a tent city, so these people, as Haas has been harassed, and there's more than just him of being harassed, if it's, these people indeed need help. We, as people that come together out here and feed every evening on Tuesday, we're doing our part. We're trying very hard to help each and every one of these people individually with clothing, with food, with, and Haas usually hides because of the fear of the police department threatening on him, to arrest him. A person shouldn't fear the police. I went to Cesar Chavez Park here on the middle of the day here a few weeks ago to feed some of our hungry homeless. I was, five minutes after coming there, I had, I counted approximately twelve officers, and which told me that you guys told them they are to be at Cesar Chavez Park to monitor the homeless. Well, that's only happened once. If you ladies are having them do this, why wouldn't this happen every time we are out there? Another thing...
We've got to wrap up here, please. We've got a lot of...
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much, Wanda. Glad the other problem was resolved for you.
Ray Vanderworth, followed by Jonathan.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. My name is Ray Vanderworth, just to help with the pronunciation, sorry. So I'm actually here representing the Democratic Socialist of America for Sacramento chapter, and as a democratic socialist myself, I just really want to share that I think what happened last night was deplorable. When I saw that, it brought me to tears, and like, my boyfriend didn't even know what was going on. He had to ask me. I was completely heartbroken. And we have to demand that we have citizens oversight of the police because what has happened, this isn't the first time, this is just the first time we've been able to capture it and really make it a big point. So I really think we need to get a citizen's oversight and better oversight of our police. That's my only comment. Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Jonathan, followed by Robert Copeland, then Heidi Marie Nelson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Jonathan Vivens, and I'm here to speak on the event of last night's, it was deplorable. However, what I'm noticing is the fact that most of the individuals that come to our community and come anywhere when I'm out and about, they don't look like me. They don't have that hue of color that I have. And so as a result, when I see the police going about their regular business, I often wonder, who's doing the hiring? Who's doing the hiring of these individuals? Why haven't they got individuals like me? I passed the exam, both sheriff and police department. I passed those exams. I didn't get past the other phases, but I did pass the exam. And the fact of the matter is, we need to have more activity leagues. When I was in Oakland, I had my children, three children, two sons and a daughter, registered under the PAL program. It's called Police Activities League. And as a result of that, we had a lot more engagement, transparency, accountability, and encounters on a positive level. And I didn't have to worry about my children stepping out of the doors and being shot down, but now we have a different environment. If we could engage, if we could do better with hiring practices and get someone on the force that when I go out and when the police are called, if I'm in a community where the police activities are, have someone in there, more than one, that looks like me. Thank you very much for your time, and hopefully we'll get this resolved. We don't, hopefully won't be back here again, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you very much.
Robert Copeland?
Well, when I saw that video on Facebook yesterday, I thought that was deplorable, what that cop did. I think, I don't think he should be suspended, I think he should be fired and brought up on charges of assaulting a citizen. I want the police accountability for other cases, and do they get adequate training or compassion? I don't see any compassion with that cop. My last comment, the police, a buck stuck with the police chief, he should be held accountable also. And there should be a citizen review board of this, and all the crimes that the cops do to the public.
Thank you, Robert.
Nelson, followed by David Andre, then Deborah Cumming.
Thank you very much. I've been part of the homeless community for the whole winter and into the April months, and I've observed some excellent things happening with the Volunteers of America programs at Eleventh and I, and Guest House, and also a Volunteers of America shelter in West Sacramento. These programs, and also South Side Park, many were manned by the Rangers, and this was very helpful. They, the Guest House had meals provided by the Salvation Army, and most of them had bag lunches and coffee, which was extremely helpful. Came into the April months, and these programs stopped. And we had some rains, had extremely cold weather this past week, where many suffered frostbite. And if these programs could continue, the South Side Park, the Volunteers of America Eleventh and I, the Volunteers of America West SAC, and the Volunteers of America Guest House, if these programs could continue throughout the year, I think the homeless situation would be livable. I also recommend that the Guest House community be a walk-in-only homeless shelter, where the overflow from the Salvation Army, Nora's house, especially the women, can have a walk-in situation, where they walk in and they are accepted in, and they had very comfortable cots, and I really appreciate all the Volunteers of America work. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
Andre?
David?
I had originally come here, the title of my talk was gonna be, "Where am I supposed to live?" I was gonna say, am I supposed to be homeless in a city where people are beaten by the police department, no matter how many community meetings we all seem to attend? So I'm very, very heartened that the brass from the police was here today, and that our mayor and city council are working to resolve this, and it's being very transparent. I'm very proud to live in the city of Sacramento, but as of right now, I'm living illegally in a car. And I'd like to, after two, over two years on the Sacramento Steps Forward list, I still do not know where I'm on this list. Yet I go to many meetings, I talk to people, I try to find out. If I can't find out, how does other people find out? So I want to ask for housing, but I want to make sure I'm not displacing anybody who needs it more than I do, and I really need to know that. So I'm volunteering, if there's gonna be a tent city, I'm volunteering to live there and do shifts, working there for volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Hey, David? So we have someone here that can help you to find out where you are on the list, if you'd like to know that before you leave?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so Mr. Sanchez will help you? Thank you.
Deborah Cumming, followed by Kevin Carter, then David DeLuce.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Cummings. I am what you call an advocate in Del Paso Heights, and I am here... I am what you call an advocate in Del Paso Heights, and I am here representing the woman that you guys have been talking about with the video. Her name is Naomi Monte, and she's sitting over here to the left. The incident that she captured last night, well, yesterday evening, rather, is just one of many, one of many. I am speaking about something that's been going on for a long time. As a cultural broker in Del Paso Heights, born and raised, and still live there, I drive in, I drive out. Something happens in my community, I get several, several calls a night. My issue is, it's time for the police to start making some real connections in our community. It is time for the police to know. Ms. Johnson's lived down on the street, Mr. Bob stays over there on Marysville. It is time to get connected in our community, with our community. We have young men that have a lot of dreads. I have on what you call a wig right now, I can pop it on and off, it's no big deal. It's a wig. But we have young black men getting off of work in broad daylight, getting off of the public transportation. Yeah, he might have jaywalked. Yeah, he might have. Give him a ticket and move on your way. But blatant disrespect comes in when our young men get assaulted. Now, Mrs. Alexis couldn't make it here because her kids didn't want to come in and get in contact with any police in this room tonight, because they witnessed this whole incident while they were in the car. I'm asking you, can we have some community, get some type of something to be done here? We want to really sit down and have one-on-one talks with these policemen. They need to know who we are. We all know from yeh high that police is just like they feel about us, we feel about them, they are bad news. It's what it is. But this is Naomi, this is the one that took the video, and she is affected here. And I'm gonna step back and let her tell her story.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. First, I just want to say I thank God. What I witnessed yesterday was horrible, was really unacceptable. Out of 49 years of my life, I have never seen anything like that, and I've been on I'm sorry. When I seen that police officer beating him the way that he did, he wouldn't stop at all. He didn't even look up at me, not a one time. He just kept doing what he said he was gonna do. He told him, if he didn't lay down on the ground, I'm gonna body slam you. He did exactly what he said he was gonna do. He did that, and he did that, and he did that, and he did that, and he did that. But what I can't say is, I am so hurt, I am so distraught, I am so confused, I am so traumatized. Do any one of you in here know what I went through last night before I went to bed? Nobody have a clue at all, but God does. I prayed, I had a headache, and I don't get headaches. I had to go get a washcloth, go in my bathroom, wet it, cold, put it on my forehead, lay down to go to sleep. Don't you know my neighbor downstairs, Alexis Jackson? Says she had a dream about me and her getting pulled out of the police car. I wouldn't want to go through that after what I just seen yesterday. It felt like I got beat. It felt like I got torn, ripped apart. The way that man, that officer antagonized that man, only thing he was doing is wanted to go home because he was, he just got off of work for a jaywalking ticket, and it escalated to that. My God, my God. My God, my God. For me to see something like that in my neighborhood? See, I watch that stuff on video. But for me to really experience it? You got to know, hey, what I'm feeling right now. I have a pacemaker and a defibrillator. When it was all said and done, don't you know the officers tried to come up to me and ask me questions? I couldn't talk because I was almost out of breath. What I seen yesterday, it is what it is, and I love everybody. Everybody knows Naomi. I am the neighborhood watcher in my neighborhood. It's because I have the kids that I have to look after, and I don't have no kids, Mayor, myself. But the kids in my neighborhood, if they can walk through that door right now, I promise you, you will have tears in your eyes for what they would have to say about me. I'm not a bad person, I'm only a productive member of society. That's it, and that's all. I mean, come on now. Hey, could we get a break sometimes? All I ask God for is some peace for all of us. Can we get some peace before we go home? I know where I'm going. Do you? Do we gotta continually, to keep doing this to one another? Can we bring some love and kindness to each other? Just because you in that uniform, you still human, just like me. That's it, and for me to witness that? Do you really know how I feel? I don't think you do. Don't you know before I go to bed tonight, I'm gonna cry? I can't, I've never really cried so much. I didn't even really cry this much when my own son passed away, and he was stillborn, my only child. But for me to happen to witness something like that, my God, my God. It is what it is, and I pray to God, not just fix this problem, we can talk about it, but let's be about it. If you put it out there, let's do something about it.
Hey, Naomi? Naomi?
Yes, sir.
I can't say I know how you feel, but if there's something we can do to help you, you have our full commitment to helping you do.
You can help who I help. I help the homeless, I work with the homeless. If you can give me a helping hand on the homeless.
Okay.
If you can come to my community.
Okay.
Can you step out of your community?
I can.
And come to my community?
Can I call you?
Can you please call me?
I can call you.
Come see what we do on a day basis?
Okay.
Can you help us out?
I can.
I've never been afraid, I've never been scared, but for me to witness something like that, my God, my God. I promise you, I've seen that.
It's gonna be all right.
Naomi?
I've seen that.
Naomi?
Yes, sir.
I promise you, I'll call you.
And I need help.
All right.
You feel me? I need help up here right now.
Okay.
It's because.
Okay, thank you so much.
Co-mayor, mayor, City Council members, what you just witnessed is what we call the, the moral conscience. The moral conscience of one when it's sick and tired, of being sick and tired. One knows today, such has been fighting since Rodney King, since fighting since Oscar Grant, since fighting since Trayvon Martin, since fighting since the many cases here in Sacramento. See, I can't go home, I can't sleep, I can't do this because I work for God. I work for a righteous cause. And today, we must have a righteous cause to take place here. What's violated today that holds in the Bill of Rights, these officers hold theyself accountable to. But I asking the Eighth Amendment of the Bill of Rights, cruel and unpunishment, that's what we saw today, street justice, that's what we witness. What I also witness is what I do every day, with everybody that comes out with me, and I do teach-ins. Peaceful nonviolent, nonviolent resistance. What your officers did the other day was a man that was standing there with nonviolent resistance, but your officers still attacked. So that's why it's so cruel, an unusual punishment of the Eighth Amendment of the Bill of Rights. The reason why I keep bringing these rights is because their rights keep tramping over all rights. And when that begins to stop, then we can get to justice. Like the Reverend Martin Luther King said, "We cannot get to justice until justice gets to us." So when will justice get to us? Is when you allow justice to get through you. And it starts with you, the city manager. I'm not putting this on the mayor. You are responsible for this city and the safety of its people. And I just ask that you get to it. I'm not here to condemn you or nobody here, but sometimes, at the end of the day, you get sick and tired of being sick and tired. Sooner or later, see, something's gonna explode.
Thank you, Mr. Card.
And right now, Black Lives Matter is in the North area, and we have other groups in the South area. I left you guys with something before I went to my mother's aid, and she passed away. But I left you guys a petition, and nobody's gotten back to me about that petition. But that petition holds everything that our police officers are supposed to be doing. Not that we're asking for, but that's okay, because the day that my mother passed away, I had 500 signatures. Now it's about to grow, in your community, your community, your community, your community, and your community.
Thank you.
Because I'm going on a rigid campaign until we get justice.
Thank you, Mr. Card. Thank you.
David DeLuce, followed by Sherilyn Dalton, then Darlene Anderson.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, city manager. I just come with just a few observations and just a few requests. One is that I think, just like everyone else here, I cannot, I cannot add any more to the eloquence of what Naomi talked about, and her, how she described the way she felt upon witnessing that. Now multiply that several fold, because that's not an isolated incident, it happens, it just doesn't always get caught on tape. And, and I think that the concern that I have, I've been, I've been a resident of Sacramento since June 1st, 1992. And, Mr. Mayor, I've been active in this city since your first stint on the City Council. And I have stood at this dais in the old City Hall and in the new, arguing for the same bit of justice that we have asked for over, for over two decades, almost three decades. And I, I still believe that in a city as diverse and as powerful as Sacramento, it is a, it is a shame, and it is an indictment, that some communities have to beg for what other communities expect on the natural. This would not fly in Land Park. This would not fly in East Sacramento. But somehow, it's acceptable in Del Paso Heights, Oak Park, Meadowview. And I just ask, Mr. Vice Mayor, you, you, you mentioned that, what can we do? Well, as a City Council and city manager, there's plenty that you can do. You can hire a, a police chief that has the community's back, and has the heart of the community, and has the experience in bringing community-oriented policing to make sure that there's a relationship between the officers that serve and the communities in which they serve. Because right now, it's an occupying force. We had that issue when I was sitting at, as the CEO of the Urban League, I saw the Twin Rivers Police Department, and you guys know that we've had an issue with them, racing up and down the street, stopping anybody that would move.
Need you to wrap up, David.
Yes, sir, I will. All I'm saying is that right now, you have communities that feel like the police department is an occupying force, and as a taxpayer, as someone who deserves to be treated with respect. All of our neighbors deserve to be treated with respect, and we are here asking and demanding that you create a police system that works for all the residents and not just a few.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sherilyn Dalton, followed by Darlene Anderson, Tion Sanchez, then our last speaker is Lorraine Brown.
Good evening. My name is Sherilyn Dalton, and I come to you guys about my son, an Officer Lee, 6'5'7". All I asked was for a public apology, and I asked his supervisor about a public apology from Mr. Lee. My son, I'm a mother of seven, I'm a taxpayer. You guys go co-inside with the school district, and I'm not liking what I'm seeing. If I can sit up and tell a principal that she's got our black children on display, and then she sends the police to my house to put me on display in my new neighborhood, and they lied on me and said that I took a gun up to the school to shoot the school up. All I asked for was a public apology. It's been a year. It's been a year. So I know what we are going through here in Sacramento, and it don't make no sense. My son looked up to y'all, looked up to police, now he won't even look y'all in the face, because y'all, that officer and another officer questioned my son, who is 11, without me present, and they made him feel this small leaving school that day. Nobody has apologized to neither one of us. I am appalled at Sacramento Police Department and Sacramento School District. Y'all ain't nothing when it comes to our children and us. And all I asked for was an apology, and y'all can't even give me that.
Darlene, Darlene Anderson.
I know that two of the board members here were prior representatives of Sac City and Fight School District Governing Board. And I had been engaged in the public education system for more than 20 years, advocating for children who look like me. But the real deal is that our children are not being educated. And so, when we look at how we are being treated on the streets, we have to realize that people use excessive force because of our people's behavior. But they're not getting the offer of faith that they were promised under the United States government. They're not being educated to their fullest potential. And when we look at the failure rate, and the dropout rate, and the number of kids who are being incarcerated, and the number of kids who are being killed on the street, then we know that there's a problem in the community. But for some unfortunate reason, we can't have the conversation in the public school system, and we can't have the conversation here about what the benefits are not for our people. We should be appalled with the number of kids who are dying in Sacramento, or African, for people who are of color, especially people who are my shade of color. And when I have three boys, a 30-year-old, a 32-year-old, and a 19-year-old, I am in fear every time they go somewhere independently by themselves, because I know how they could be treated. Not that they have any behaviors that would determine that they needed to have that. When you see how that young man was dragged down and beaten because, why? He didn't respond in the manner that he should have? Well, guess what? Law enforcement are not gods. No one gave them the power to oversee our personal behaviors. And jaywalking is not a crime, it's a public policy. It's a public policy supposedly established to ensure that the public safety was at hand. So when you take a public safety issue and then use it as an enforcement of the law, it's wrong, because that's criminal. And so he had no reason to be dragged off to jail, but he could have lost his job. He says, "I'm just getting off work, man. I'm not trying to go to jail. I don't want to lose my employment."
Darlene, I need your final thoughts.
That didn't make a difference. And I'm saying that you have the power now to make a difference, because all the oversight for public policy is coming back to the local control. We have voices, and we need to be heard. But we need to be heard about what's really going on, the inability to educate our children in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tion Sanchez, followed by Lorraine Brown, then our, now our last speaker is Tiara Phillips.
Hello, God bless. I'm from Reaching Back to Youth and Mother Community at 95838 and 15. Yesterday at 5:20, I got a call from an incident on Grand Avenue Cypress. And the incident was the boy who got dragged out with Naomi. Naomi, I grew up with her. I was born, raised in, I still live in Del Paso Heights. I'm a community activist, and what I'm, what my problem is, right now, you guys, we are, you guys have us in a program right now, are trying to help us to deal with the police department and our community. We have workshops in Del Paso Heights, and this workshop is supposed to help us to make sure the police don't hurt our community and make sure the community brings closeness together. And how are we gonna do this and make our community believe in us if the police is, like, not doing their job? And we doing our job, and it's hard for us to get these people in Del Paso Heights to believe in us. And if we sit in these classes from 9:00 in the morning to 4:00, for what? Why are these classes a for? If these are set for to train us, to help our community? And then this young man is on Grand Avenue Cypress. If he's on Grand and Cypress and the bus stop right there, how did you get on Cypress and firehouses down for that police to get on him? If he got on him, he should have got on him right there on Grand Avenue where everybody could see what's happening, so waiting for that boy to go around that corner, where he did wrong. So if that was daytime, what would he did? Took that boy to an alley and beat him up? What would have happened to this young man? I have a brother came around here. I have to worry about my brother now if he goes out and the police tell him to stop. If my brother can't hear you, what you guys gonna drag my brother up and beat him up too now? Is that what's gonna happen to my brother next? And then I have another incident. My son was at the gate going into my complex. Why the police won't pull him over right there? He's just stopped just 'cause one headlight's out. Why you harassing him when he stopped and there's three other cars behind him? Where's the harassment gonna stop for us? We live in this community. We need officers we could depend on. We have Officer Bean, we'd like Officer Bean back out here. We can't bring him back, but we like to have people like him or Danny Oliver, who's died. These two officers are dead, but they from Del Paso Heights.
Gotcha.
And we like those type of people, where we can believe in them again.
Thank you.
Because I know these personally, and if we can get these type of officers, our community be better.
Agreed.
And I bet you it will be.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much.
Brown.
Okay. Well, as a psychologist, I've been following the assault on our society since the early 90s. And our Free Trade Agreement privatized military and a war conflict that took away our right to maintain our self-determination, our free enterprise system, our controls over housing, medical, and having the people have a right to direct government to get their needs met, as so many said. We had a firewall put in place in 1995, when, after the Bush and Clinton administration had free trade, where there were no restrictions on trade, where you could have monopolies, where you could buy up industry and send it overseas, take away our jobs, take away our housing, take away our right to live, and take away our free will, which we've always had in this country. That's why it's called a free society. Free will, free self-determination. But we don't have any choices anymore. It seems like the warlords and the drug lords can just wield their power. So I am asking that our federal government and forces are 1995 firewalls that says, "We have protections against monopolies that are exploiting our communities and obstructing justice." And that is what all these people are talking about. Amen to that.
Tiara Phillips.
Ms. Phillips is our last speaker.
I've been to a lot of meetings, and I've never seen change. It's like we come up here and we say what we have to say, but things still remain the same. As well, I understand how police are trained. They believe that if you're not a police, you're nobody, but we are somebody, and somebody has to stand up for our rights. My daughter attends Pony Express Elementary. The Pony, until I filed a complaint against Pony Express Elementary, they were okay with me. But once I filed their complaint, they now use the Sacramento PD to harass me. So if I have a concern of anything, they'll call the police on me. And that's not fair. So a lot of people in our, in our world today are just getting treated unjust. And the thing is, when do they get justice and they're prosecuted for their actions? People are getting prosecuted for killing dogs, get five to 10 years plus. But you kill a black African-American male and you get no time? That doesn't make any sense. So a dog's life is more valuable than a human being's life. So at the end of the day, what is the point of the meeting if there's not gonna be any change? Why do they get paid leave? I mean, I work for a law enforcement department, but it's not fair that they get paid leave for killing someone. It's less like rewarding them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for coming. Okay. Thank you very much for the public comment tonight, and again, thank you to the acting chief and, and the members and the city manager and his team. Only the beginning, not the end. Thank you. Let's move on to the other pieces of the agenda here tonight and move specifically to the consent calendar. Moved and seconded. Is there public testimony on the consent calendar?
Yes, the consent calendar is items 1 through 12. Item number one has been withdrawn, no other changes or corrections. I do have one public speaker request.
Is that Mr. Worthy?
Mac Worthy for item 12.
Just a guess.
Oh, people, I don't know. These are the type of things that these people should be here talking about. This is, this item 12 is one of the problems that you have. You all have, in our neighborhoods. Now, what is some of violent crime produced? You know that's a lie. When you read this, you know it has to be something about black folks. This is hopper grass living. So you sprinkle a little bit of crumbs out there for them, and they satisfy. This is your political voting.
What item are you speaking on, Mr. Worthy?
Pardon?
Number 12?
Number 12.
Okay.
This, this is your political base, the reason you dropped those little crumbs out there to them. They can't sustain themselves over 100,000 dollars. What can't they prevent a crime? Nothing. They can't even go and talk to the police. Yes, we had, the police done a good job, but you got an investigation going on. Gonna be a whole different story when the investigation finish. A whole different story. These are the type of things, create those things in your neighborhoods. By the political system giving a certain group a little bit of crumbs to go and say, "Y'all gonna solve this crime." No, you're not. You may curb the crime. You are part of the problem. Your nonprofit organizations, they are part of the problem. Those are the people get a slap on the hand. Those are the people that you have depends on to vote for you. You can't have a Mac Worthy come in and say, "Well, where's this, where's Dale Robinson tonight?" It's all right, it's consent calendar. You already approved this. But what is Dale Robinson doing in Del Paso Heights? Nothing, people, wake up! It's time to open your eyes, black people. You are part of your own problem for taking these type of crumbs. You've got to demand more. You've got to demand an economic base from the private sector to sustain you in those neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. All right, the consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained? Go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment on item 12. We've been working with these two organizations, Robert Family Development Center and Reimagine Mac Road Foundation, to administer these programs in the North Area and the South Area for a number of years. And, and I've happened to have the opportunity to go to both of those locations and see the number of kids and families who visit with these programs and benefit from these programs. And while they may be crumbs to some, they're a lifeline for many. And I just want to express my support to the two organizations who are putting them on, who are helping us to build better relationships between our community and our law enforcement community. And so I, I just want to acknowledge the job that they're doing. I would encourage anybody to go out there on any night to see what they're doing in order to bring the community together and make a difference in Sacramento. And so I fully support this item as well as this consent calendar.
Very good. The item passes, and that just to be specific, it's 100,000 to the Roberts Family Development Center and 100,000 where else?
Real management.
Mac Road. Okay, very good. A lot of young people are gonna get some help. That's great.
And jobs.
And jobs. Work for that. Okay, item 13, please.
Next item is public hearing, item 13, vacation of a portion of the public alley bounded by Broadway, Second Avenue, 34th and 35th Streets.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members. My name is Thomas Adams. I'm from the Public Works Department, Engineering Services Division. The item I have for you this evening is a portion of alley abandonment that straddles, the alley that straddles the Broadway Triangle Project located near Broadway, Second Avenue, 34th and 35th Streets. The request for this abandonment for this mixed-use development is for, to utilize portion of the alley as a outdoor seating plaza area for restaurant, cafe, that will accompany the, the existing development that's, that's already there, that's been completed. The alley itself will be closed when not in use, when, when in use for the outdoor seating. There was a issue with this with one of the adjacent property owners in which they felt like they, commercial properties, needed access for delivery vehicles through this area. Believe the Broadway Triangle owner and this property owner agreed on an access easements once this item has been approved by council and abandoned. The city's Department of Transportation, I mean, Department of Public Works, Engineering Services, the Real Estate Department, the Fire Department, and Police Department supports this request. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm ready for any questions anybody may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. All right. I know we have one member of the public wants to testify, then I'll turn it over to Council Member Shneur.
Yes, we have a speaker slip from Sam Allen. Aside him.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Sam Allen. I'm a Oak Park resident of the last 12 years. I'm a business owner as well in the neighborhood, and I just, I'm here to voice my support for this project. It's very difficult to get that private investment in our neighborhoods, so it's really exciting to see some of the changes that have happened through projects such as this. I think a very similar project is Oak Park Brewing, what that does. By activating the street over there, we've really brought a lot of additional security, eyes on the street, more jobs. And so anything that we can do to help encourage that further private investment is really important to Oak Park. So I'm just, I'm just here really in support of this. I do own a property right across the street from this as well, and it's just really encouraging to see the change that's happening. And I think it's very important to the neighborhood that this change continues to happen and encourage more jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Shneur, your district.
Thanks, Mayor. Just real briefly, I want to, I want to welcome Ron Berlakis, who's here. This is his project. Took a lot of risks to make this work. It's been very successful. This is a small piece on the, on the way to its continued success. And I would like to talk at some point about the length of time this took to do. I know this was a bit of a complicated situation, but I think we were at this for multiple years to, to do this half alley. So with that, I'm gonna move the item.
Seconded. It's moved and seconded. Thank you. Public testimony hasn't been heard, and other council members. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstained. The measure passes. Councilmember Ashby has stepped out for just a moment, so we'll record that as a seven to nothing vote.
And Mayor, just for the record, the public hearing was closed on that item.
Public hearing was closed. That was soon part of the motion.
I said that quietly to myself.
Yes. It's now noted on the record. Let's move now to item 14, please. We have an appeal.
Yes, public hearing, item 14, is a third-party appeal for the Elks Building Card Room.
Evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. My name is Michael Hannibut. I'm with the Community and Development Department. I'm here to present the third-party appeal for the Elks Building Card Room project located at 92111th Street within the Central Business District. The requested entitlement is for a conditional use permit for a 23,600-square-foot room, square-foot card room. There's no exterior work proposed for the building at this time. On February 23rd, 2017, the Planning and Design Commission unanimously approved the conditional use permit for file P-16-051. And on March 6th, 2017, an appeal for this decision was filed by legal counsel representing two other card rooms in operation within the city. Staff has reviewed the appeal and concluded the licensing issues raised by the appellant are not relevant to the request for a conditional use permit. Instead, this issue will be addressed by the Revenue Division of the Finance Department in their card room licensing process. More detailed information may be found in attachment 7 of the staff report as well. Staff believes there are no outstanding issues as conditioned and recommends denial of the appeal, denial of the appeal, thereby approving the conditional use permit. Now I'll hand it to the applicant for a brief presentation on the project.
Right, who's speaking for the applicant? The applicant himself, Mr. Ayers. Good evening.
Mayor Steinberg, city council members, thank you. My name's Steve Ayers. I'm with the Elks Tower, and I'm here to speak and talk on behalf of the card room and the CUP that is before us tonight. I'd like to introduce some of my team here that are available for any questions that you may have. My architect, Peter Danenfelter, who has worked with the Elks Tower and myself for the last 13 years restoring it to its old grandeur. Stan Seif, our card room manager, who has 30 years as a veteran in the gaming and entertainment industry. Mark Tyndall, our chief of security, 25 years, veteran with the Sacramento Police Department. Stephen Pagano, our project manager for the card room, and Jeff Dorso, our counsel for this project. I would just say, and I'll try to keep this brief, is that this project helps our city continue to build upon the renaissance that has taken place within our city and from all the good work that our mayor and, and all you council folks have done. I'd like to take a moment and say I appreciate Councilmember Steve Hanson's vision and efforts within our city and our downtown core for all he's done and for this project as well. This project brings a unique opportunity. It's a 24 amenity to our city. It provides gaming and entertainment, includes the library, which is fine spirits, which is gonna be in a very elegant setting, port and chocolate for the theater patrons, a wine cellar and meeting space. So a very exciting project and opportunity. Our outreach has included reaching out to the Alklife Match and Flat and Historic Neighborhood Association folks. We've received their support. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, they're looking forward to this being a good amenity for our city and for folks coming into our city and, and spending time here and, and enjoying our city. The Downtown Partnership is in support of this as well, along with many fellow business and property owners within our, our area. And I think in closing, I would just say that this is gonna help with, you know, the quality of life and the quality of work that we all have come to enjoy and I love personally here in our city. So having said that, if you have any questions... And so having said that, if you have any questions, my team and I are here to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ayers. I know this councilmember Hanson's district, and he's up to speak. Well, let's hear the public testimony. I know there's one person opposed, at least per the sign-in sheets here. Maybe we'll take the person who is opposed first.
Okay.
Okay? Who is opposed?
Sean Henshaw.
And Mr. Dorso, did you want to add anything to the eloquent presentation, Mr.?
Jeff Dorso, on behalf of the applicant, just a point of clarification that we'll have a rebuttal opportunity following.
Of course. You do have witnesses in favor as well. I don't know, are they, are they witnesses who you have brought?
Some of them, yes, and some of them, no.
We're happy to hear from everybody, but again, we don't need it to be duplicative.
Yes.
So maybe you talked to a couple of folks who came. Thank you. Let's hear the witness in opposition, Mr. Henshaw. Mr. Henshaw?
Sean Henshaw.
Sean? No?
Nope.
Sean's here. Okay, there he is. I know him.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, Sean Henshaw here is a private citizen, work here in downtown, but regular poker player in the region. Just for clarification point, I am opposed to the appeal, so I don't want to speak out of turn or mention.
You're in favor of the project?
Very much in favor of the project and happy to speak in that point, so if I'm cutting in line, I don't want to do that.
Okay, so you're in favor.
Can I speak to that, sir?
You want to speak?
In favor.
Go ahead, just make it brief.
Wonderful, okay. So, thank you. Just to be clarifying, that I am opposed to the appeal and in very much in support of the project. There's 107 pages of background, the job creation aspects and qualities, you know, the economic benefits to the city, you know, the continued revitalization of downtown, you know. The project has had a thorough review in the Planning Commission, and I request that you acknowledge that this is the first of a multi-step process, and Mr. Ayers has had a history of trustworthy development in the city, and I encourage you to support the project. Thank you.
Good. Is there anybody opposed to the project for the appeal? That's who we want to hear from first. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's procedurally a little confusing when you say in favor of, we are the appellant.
You're the appellant, you're in favor of the appeal and against the project.
Absolutely.
And your name is?
My name is Dale Campbell, I'm with the Weintraub Tobin Law Firm, and I represent Capital Casino and its owner, John, excuse me, Clark Rosa, and Lotus Casino and its owner, John.
John Park. Okay, so why do you oppose the project?
Your Honor, the...
I'll, I'll put on a robe if you'd like. Go ahead.
Here, council members. You have an opportunity to set precedence to ensure meaningful compliance with the city codes controlling the issuance of card room license and the related CUPs. The staff has drawn a distinction between Title 17 permits and Title V licensing issues, which in this situation might be otherwise an intellectually interesting discussion, but here it is not applicable. The right to operate a casino and the attendant conditional use permit is highly regulated by the city code. Even the staff recommendation bases the foundation on the precept that Mr. Ayers is currently working with the Finance Department to obtain the required license. And so this is the crumbling foundation upon which the city should realize and reject the CUP. As you know, my clients have already sued the city because of an invalid resurrection of the Casino Royale license. And that invalid resurrection occurred as a result of a settlement agreement that was only presented to city attorney, and it was not presented to the city council. But the, the concept of that settlement agreement was that they would attempt to revive a statutorily rescinded license in order to allow the owners of Casino Royale to arrange for a purchase. Now, the problem here is you can't do that under the city code. Under the city code, it is illegal. First of all, your license has no value, that it's illegal to attempt to transfer it, and upon an attempt to transfer, that license is automatically revoked by statute. Here, we know that it was an attempt, that there is this attempt to purchase the Casino Royale license. Mr. Ayers was represented by Attorney Ari Zikas, by Bob Thomas, the former city manager, who both acknowledged to the city that the transaction is Mr. Mayor, Mr. Ayers wants to purchase Casino Royale's license. That's absolutely prohibited by the code section cited.
Okay, so your argument, we're going to, I'm going to ask you to wrap up here relatively quickly if you can.
Okay, your honor, but, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I understand, but this is, this is our appeal, and the existing lawsuit will deal with the attempt to revival, but here you have a situation where the foundation for the CUP is the precept that there is a possibility that Mr. Ayers can obtain a license to operate. That is impossible, because he cannot acquire the license from Casino Royale, nor can the city process the current application, which is couched as a new license. The new license cannot be issued by the city. In accordance with the code, the reissueance of this fourth license may only be taken by way of a lottery and pursuant to rules that the city council adopts. And so to try to divorce these two issues and say, well, we're just dealing with a land use issue, when the foundation for that land use issue is the possibility of obtaining the casino license.
License.
It's impossible.
We get the argument, I know Councilmember Hanson may want to respond on the appellant, the applicant may want to respond as well. Thank you. Get the argument. Okay. So, are there others here in support? I would, again, don't need anything more than a me-too, please. We don't need lengthy testimony here, okay? Who's, you're all welcome to testify, by the way.
Anthony Scotch, Justin Turner, Dana Durham, Robert Abelon, David Mastagni, and David Connor.
Anybody, any of you are welcome to come up and take your couple minutes if you like, but I think we're, Councilmember Hanson's going to deal with this.
With the second speaker, I'm in favor of the project, not, I'm David Connor, in favor of the project.
Okay, okay.
I'm Dana Durham, and I just wanted to speak very briefly on having been a tenant, well, actually working for a company that worked in the Elks Building, of what a stunning project this could possibly be, as well as someone who works closely in a volunteer capacity with veterans who are looking for employment. And some of the opportunities, I really think, can fill some needs for the community overall, and would be a great revitalization of that building.
Thank you for testifying.
My name is Justin Turner in support. I have a letter from my assembly member who also plays pokers in support, Mr. Mathis, so me too.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Anthony Scotch. I'm an original resident of Sacramento, born and raised here, been a real estate broker, commercial real estate broker for over 40 years, also do development. I see the conditional use permit in doing leases for clients as a condition precedent before they necessarily get any license to operate whatever business that they are attempting to operate. I recently went through the entitlement process up in El Dorado County to get a conditional use permit for a senior assisted living project. We don't have a tenant, but we are looking for one, and they are going to bring their license to operate that business. Thank you.
Thank you. Very briefly?
There's a me-too.
There's a me-too. I just want, Robert Abelon with Region Business, just wanted to, for 10 seconds, wanted to add in, I think one thing that's also being lost in the mix is that will be roughly around 100 jobs will be brought into the downtown core, and also an amenity of 24-hour food that's, that'll be around in the area. And as a, as a resident in District 4, I think it's something that I'm very in favor of and 100% supportive of. Thank you.
Not during. Okay. Did you sort of want to get on the record here? Might as well just get your name on the record here so that the record's complete. Okay. Is that it?
David Connor, and then David Mastagni.
Sorry for the confusion.
That's okay, just naming.
David Connor, I'm the CEO and founder of Recon Nexus. It's a local organization that represents the real estate and construction industry. My membership's comprised of largely of hundreds, hundreds of professionals in those industries. We've enjoyed the revitalization of the downtown. We see this as a project that will benefit that revitalization, not only that, but the jobs it will create. And then as a lot of my members have the opportunity to do, is entertain clients from out of the area for economic development opportunities, and this will be a definite venue where we'll be able to entertain those clients, so.
Good. You're in favor.
I'm in favor.
You're in favor, thank you, of the project, not the appeal.
David Mastagni.
Mr. Mastagni here? I know he was here earlier.
I am here.
David, just come on up, we would always accord you.
About your son.
At least 20 seconds, go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to yield my time. I think that the, the matter is being adequately covered, and I think Mr. Dorso is going to speak to that. But obviously, we represent the real party and interest in the lawsuit and are in favor of the CUP going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mastagni, good to see you. I'm going to ask, before Mr. Dorso comes up to rebut, Councilmember Hanson.
I'll wait for Dorso.
You want to wait, okay. Mr. Dorso, you want to talk about the timing here, the essential argument that it, we cannot grant the CUP if there's a cloud, if you will, on, on, on the title? How do you, how do you respond to that?
Yes. So first, I submitted a letter earlier in the record, which has gone to each of your inboxes, and I'm sure the city attorney has as well. With respect to this argument, I believe the term that the appellant's counsel was using was "precept." With all due respect, that just fundamentally misunderstands the nature of land use law and the difference between a conditional use permit and a license. A conditional use permit is a permit that runs with the land. It's one that's issued separately and approved by the Planning Commission and/or the city council. A license is something that's issued as a business operation tool that regulates the actual operator of the business on the site, and it's actually issued by the city manager or his or her designee. In this case, as in many cases, the reason for that bifurcation is simple. You have a land use determination as to a citing question, and over time, you may have many different operators that actually operate that use. Think of a gas station, you might get a CUP at a gas station, and for 10 years...
Let's, let's, let's hope not.
Yeah, you know, you know, I, I, I think the Elks is probably safe from beating gas stations, but you could have a Chevron or a Shell over time. These are in no way dependent on each other. There's nothing in the code that cites that a CUP is in some way reliant on, on a license. And further, there's no requirement for the CUP that the license in fact be issued to Steve Ayers. If one of the other card rooms decided at some point they wanted to relocate there, that certainly would be a possibility. So in closing, on that point, they just fundamentally misunderstand the law. And then I think lastly, a point that was mentioned, and Councilmember Hanson may allude to this, there's going to be several, or at least probably 150 to 200 jobs created by this project, so we are excited about that job creation element. And we'll keep it short, given the short nature of the appeal unless there are further questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorso. There may, but let's turn it over to the councilmember whose district. This project involves Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I know this is a very interesting project. It also happens to be in my neighborhood, so I'm extremely interested in its success. And I think, first, the narrow question before us is just whether or not we should approve the CUP. To all due respect to the appellant, the actual license, the state gambling license, isn't before us in this, in this setting right now. I think that what Mr. Ayers has done with the Elks Tower is remarkable. We work very hard to preserve our historic buildings, and these are labors of love. Oftentimes, they're far more expensive to fix up and rehabilitate to the standards of historic preservation than most people are willing to do. But the fact that this building is now occupied with new offices, with new activities, and this being an additional one, I think is a testament to Mr. Ayers and his commitment to the community. And, but also the affection you have for the building itself is evident in how much you've done for it. Adaptive reuse is something we also embrace in this opportunity to activate the ground floor level of the building. I know there's been a lot of different ideas, first a chocolate, chocolatier, then rail bridge, which didn't quite work, and now this. I think it's not a site we should give up on trying to find an active use for. And this particular one wasn't one I was initially, it wouldn't have been something that I would have sought out, because it hadn't occurred to me. So I asked Mr. Ayers to go out and talk to the community, and through significant outreach, found that there was a tremendous amount of support. And I think the council's been getting supportive emails, not only from neighborhood folks, businesses, but also from a lot of other people thinking that this is a good use for this space. That being said, we've also applied a lot of conditions to the project for the land use reasons that we normally would apply to uses like this, security, monitoring, you know, all sorts of other things to make sure that it's a positive member of the community. And I think it'll continue, I think that it will be that if, if we approve this tonight. Finally, I understand why Mr. Rosa would file an appeal. It's capitalism at its finest, you know, go for the jugular of your competitors. And Mr. Rosa runs a fine operation at Capital Casino, not far away, but I do think that this, the city has room for more than one card room in the central city, and certainly I think this will be an important addition. And just the final thing I'd say is, we, we in these situations often do our best to get owners of buildings like Mr. Ayers, to get operations that are responsible. We don't always hit that mark, but I have a high level of confidence, given the team that was assembled, that this will be a great new business. And Mr. Hannibut, I just have to say, after years of seeing your name on things, I'm glad that Evan in the Planning Department finally let you come, come out and present on this. You did a very nice job. And with that, I would like to move that we reject the appeal and approve the CUP.
It's been moved and seconded. The public testimony has been concluded, there's no other council member up. I want to thank you, Councilmember Hanson, for your leadership on this, agree with everything that you said. You know, it's competition, is what it is, but competition's a good thing. And it'll be a real amenity for the downtown, so. Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, abstain. The measure passes seven to nothing. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Everybody? Okay, let us move to file item 15. Ms. Cheney here?
Next item is discussion item 15, appointment of city treasurer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am Samantha Wallace, I'm here tonight standing in for Melissa Cheney.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. The item has been moved and seconded, and the report, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. Is there anything that you want to particularly note? I noticed there's a guy sitting in the back row there who's anxiously waiting this and smiling, as he should be.
The only thing I'd like to note for the record is that this resolution, being on the discussion calendar, does have us comply with Government Code 54953(c)(3), that the item does have to be on the open discussion calendar.
We understand. Thank you very much. Are there any public testimony on this item?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Worthy?
One public speaker, Mac Worthy.
I mean, I mean, welcome.
You know.
And what, what's wrong with this resolution?
The position that a treasurer holds in this city, look like as many black people coming here on issues, they would be trying to get close to a man like this to tell you something about finance. Our black people don't understand finance. But that's nothing...
Have to do with the qualifications for the city treasurer.
Yeah, but we ain't saying who you hire. I'm saying my people should be able to try to get... I'm saying my people should be able to try to get close to a man like that that can teach them something. I was in several places that our people cannot explain finance that's selected. And that's what's killing us. Where if they were coming in, instead of taking $100,000, they'd come in with a plan like these people here came in with. But they can't do that, because you don't choose the blacks to come in that got business experience. Economics people, free enterprise. If you do that, we might forget some people. This treasurer holds a position on the charter. There's issues to the charter, but nobody, and that's automatically, he holds that position on the charter. But see, we don't think financially independent. We can always get those little crumbs, and we are satisfied. You're pacifying, because that's your voting base. We change that, we won't have to argue with the police department, because we can hire a security force with a gun on the side in our neighborhood. We can hire our own patrols, and we got the economic base. But they prefer to come in and fight the police department, and you sit there and don't tell them nothing. The black folks on the city council can't tell them nothing, because they don't know. They are nonprofits. So the treasurer has the expertise of beyond, I can sit there and throw the bricks at him, and he understands, and finds out, what do you need? You need an economic stream of your own, and you become independent in the city.
Very good. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it got moved and seconded awfully quickly there.
You want to add, as an honorary seconder?
Yeah.
Please, let's have the record reflect.
I just wanted to say to Mr. Colville that I was in your camp right from the get-go, and I'm sure you'll do a very good job, and look forward to working with you as you move into your new position.
Excellent. John, you know, I had a chance last week when you presented on the Natomas Bonds, but let's, you know, just take another opportunity to say congratulations. We're really happy to be working with you. You showed a lot of patience and skill throughout the process, and so, all's well that ends well. Welcome. Okay. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Opposed? Abstain? Passes seven to nothing. We have one more item tonight, and that is File Item 16.
This is Item 16, Accelerated Water Meter Program, Multiple Assignment Task Order Contract, Package One, Contract Awards.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg. City council members, my name's Ian Peats. I'm a senior engineer with the Department of Utilities, also the program manager for the city's accelerated water meter program, which will be putting about $230 million of projects in construction over the next three and a half years, installing a little over 40,000 water meters, and around 80 miles of pipeline replacement work. I'm here tonight to request your approval of contracts for the first two projects in the accelerated water meter program, using the multiple award task order contracting, or the Maytalk process. It is an alternative competitive award process, which bases its best value selection as opposed to a lowest bid. The goal of this program is to minimize the impact on our customers while getting safe, quality work done on time and within budget, with the maximum economic benefit to the city. Evaluation criteria used to select these contractors through the Maytalk process was management approach, delivery approach, which included safety, quality assurance, timely delivery, et cetera, past performance, local hire commitment, and pricing. We've developed a comprehensive public outreach program that's designed to reach property owners and residents through multiple channels. First off, we have a dedicated website, www.metersmatter.org, with a GIS-based map that's fully searchable by address, and will show where and when construction will be happening throughout the city. Customer notifications, our customers will get at least five notifications, beginning eight weeks prior to construction. Three of them will be through the mail, and another two that are delivered, hand-delivered to their doors. We're also holding open houses in each project area prior to construction beginning, and we have a multilingual outreach. Our door hanger is in both English and Spanish. And then, we've also worked with Crossings TV to develop commercials in Mandarin, Mong, Russian, and English. As part of the program, we have a local hire component, which requires all of the contracts under the program to have a minimum 5% local hire, with a goal of 20%. And both of the contractors in this first package have committed to providing 20% local labor force for construction, and that equates to about 10 to 12 jobs for the first two projects. To ensure safety, all of the contractors in this program are required to be Gold Shovel Standard certified, and that ensures that they have the correct policies and procedures in place for safe excavation operations to avoid damaging underground utilities, especially natural gas lines. We do have contractors represented here tonight. Mark Schaefer with Granite Construction is here in the back, and also Jeremy Jaeger with Marquez Pipeline. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
We have council members who are queued up here. We have no public comment, so let's hear from Councilmember Gueda first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the Public Utilities Department and your staff for sitting down with a lot of our constituents, sitting down with our office staff, to figure out, how do we best communicate with the public about the rollout of this new accelerated meter watering program? My neighborhood, along with some of the folks in the Pocket, were the first guinea pigs in the installation of water meterings. And you learn a lot of things when you're the guinea pigs, particularly in our street. And the biggest one was communication. And I think the Utilities Department has done an excellent job in this go-around of that communication. And just for those who are watching the show today, the council meeting today...
Show.
We made it to the show. Sorry, the council meeting today, everyone on Channel 14 are live. You know, I think it's important to, again, point out the aspects of where they can get information, right? And that's at metersmatter.org. And then, what's the telephone number that they can call?
808-5870.
808-5870?
Correct.
And they will get a return call within 24 hours when they, if, on their issue with their water meter. Is that correct?
Right. Within one business day.
Within one business day. So I think that's the important part, because I know that when construction happens on your street, that's a critical issue. Not only that, but online, you can find the detailed information about when the construction will happen. The second piece, I'll say, is I'm glad that we're moving forward on the local hiring piece in this contract procurement, and also making sure that we have good safety standards in the construction of this contract. Overall, I think this is a much better process than our first go-around, and I think the selection, looking at customer service in this procurement method, I think is going to deliver a better product. Would like to get some feedback after we get going on some of these projects, both in the Elmhurst, Tahoe Park, and Oak Park community, particularly on those, the areas where we may have alley intersections. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will move the item.
Okay. Moved and seconded. We move to Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They say not to waste a crisis, and I think that the Utilities Department has collaborated very well with the council in evolving, is the word I would use, our meter program from where it was when I first came on the council. And it was something we felt we were forced to do, thanks to some guy in the legislature. But we learned to embrace change. And, you know, the drought was a crisis that we had to embrace, but also, we, I think, when we first conceived the program, we didn't think through as deeply as we needed to some of the consequences of the way it was designed. So now, we have a better-designed program that implements the meters faster, more cost-effectively. And I'd also say that the experience we had in doing meters in some of the first areas that got it, including parts of my district where we had contractors that weren't meeting the standards that we needed, I lived through that, and I dealt with the complaints, and Mr. Bousath and Mr. Cherry can tell you about how fun that was for all of us. I think this is putting us on the right track. And so, while I didn't make the motion or the second, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of us using best value in this case, because the previous approach left a lot of our constituents really unhappy. And the department, and the council, and our other city staff, I think, tried to address it, and this is a very appropriate and thoughtful response, so I just want to say thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do think this is a better approach to dealing with the customer service issues that we had in the previous contract. I didn't see it in the report, but in our meetings, we talked about the targeting of the local hire. And if I recall, the local hires would be from those promise zone areas, and those areas that have been hardest-hit and underserved. Are you putting up a chart there?
Yes. Here's the local hire map. It has the area outlined in yellow is the promise zone, and then, the disadvantaged zip codes are in purple, and then, the other areas are with the red slash lines. But that is the local hire area.
So those areas that have been typically underserved are going to get good paying jobs. Mr. Mayor, this is a great way for the city to leverage its buying power, to increase the disposable income of those communities that generally have low income. And this is the template that we would hope to use in some of our other contracting, so that every time we spend a dollar, if we can, we can direct those dollars to go to those communities that have been underserved. So, Bill, I want to thank you and the staff for putting this together, for working on this. I know you had to go through a lot of legal gyrations to get to this point, but I think you're setting the standard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Good comments. I want to add to that in a second briefly. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to assure all my constituents in District Three who had issues, you know, in the last go-around, that the public outreach will be much more robust this time around. And if issues do arise, the recourse will be abundant for you to get to people who know how to solve that issue, and that you can get satisfaction. So I think from a customer point of view, we're in much better condition, and I expect that we'll be able to handle any complaints quickly and efficiently, and courteously, and things will go well. Another thing I wanted to mention to Mr. Bousath, you know, when we spoke about this in the past, I mentioned that we really needed more supervision. We needed more eyes from the city on the projects. And as I understand it, we're hiring Mr. Estep to be a consultant. Is that correct?
Yes, he is one of our lead construction inspectors on the program.
So this is good news, because this guy is very good. He knows what he's looking at. He's very efficient. He gets it done, so I'm pretty excited about that. Overall, I anticipate that these projects will move much more smoothly, and ultimately be great value for the city. So I thank Ms. Modest, the consultants on the project, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Okay. Thank you very much. One last comment. Councilmember Gueda?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. For the city manager, one, I want to thank your staff for responding to my office's concerns from constituents about city water violations that were happening in the middle of the night, particularly when it was raining. And if we can continue to oversee those kind of enforcement mechanisms, and if you could get back to the constituents as well on that issue, greatly appreciate it. And thank you for being responsive on that issue.
Very good. I wholeheartedly support this as well, for all the reasons stated, and this is more of a generic comment, but I hope we get to a point where we are not celebrating a 5% local hiring component. I just, that 5% to 20%, even 20%, seems rather low to me. I just hope we could, that we are creating, you know, Councilmember Schneer, you know, those pathways, those workforce experiences where we're able to do more substantial local hiring out of our neighborhoods for these kinds of projects. Should be an aspiration or something I want to talk about at our retreat and throughout the year. Okay. Great work. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The measure passes seven to nothing. That's the end of the formal agenda. We've done public testimony. Are there any council comments? If there are no council comments tonight, up, Councilmember Harris.
Hey, look, Easter is coming up.
And, yes, go, go.
I'm trying to mention Easter egg hunts. So we'll be having a couple of Easter egg hunts in District Three. On Saturday, April 15th, we'll have the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast and Easter Egg Hunt. At McKinley Park, it starts early, at 7:00 a.m., goes to 11:30. The egg hunt, of course, is free, but the pancake breakfast, adults are $6, children $4. On the same day, Natomas Community Association is having an Easter egg hunt, beginning at 11:00 a.m. at the South Natomas Community Center at 2881 Truxell Road. Sutter Park, the project that is replacing the old Sutter Memorial Hospital. The Sutter Park Community Meeting is this Thursday, April 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Clooney Center in the Alhambra Room. So what we're looking for is review and comments on the conceptual master plans for a .6-acre neighborhood park. So we encourage you to come and express your opinions on what a public park in that great development should look like. And lastly, Food Truck Mania is this Friday, April 14th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. in McKinley Park. Hope to see you there.
Very good. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of announcements. Two of them happen on Thursday, the 13th. We have a community spotlight that we want to invite you to. It's the Greenhaven Print Pack and Ship, which is located at 372 Florin Road. We'll be there from 9:00 o'clock until 10:00, and this is an opportunity to spotlight and highlight a business in the Pocket area. So come by and say hello. And then, on the 13th, at 6:00 p.m., we've got the Budget Town Hall Meeting, Mayor, and you and I will be there to discuss ways that we can better serve the constituents in our community, and learn about how each city department, the resources that are available to you. So once again, that's at 6:00 p.m. at the Robbie Waters Library. It is our Budget Town Hall Meeting, and we invite you to attend. And then, on Saturday, the 15th, this is Egg Hunt Extravaganza. It says, take place at 10:00 o'clock at Garsha Bend Park, and at 1:00 o'clock at Mesa Grande Park in the Valley High area. We want you to come by and enjoy the Egg Hunt Extravaganza. We'll have face painting. We'll have music by the Sacramento Philharmonic, and we want to make sure that all the kids, big and little, don't forget your basket.
Don't forget your basket. Thank you. Very good. Councilmember Gueda?
Sometimes they confuse us.
Yes. You guys do kind of look alike.
It's the glasses, I guess, you know. But, all right. District Six hotspots on Friday, April 14th, at the George Sims Community Center. It's a safe place for the youth in our community to engage in sports and in dance classes. Bring all your neighbors and friends, come have some fun. 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at George Sims. It's a great, safe place on Fridays for our youth and community. The Fruit Ridge Manor Neighborhood Mobile District Office Hours, we're going to have our city staff out there answering questions that you may have at the Bell Arrow over on Fruit Ridge, a few blocks away from Stockton Boulevard and between 65th Street. It's kind of a city hall at your neighborhood. Come out and enjoy some coffee with us, and a good conversation. And then, we have the District Six Extravaganza on Saturday, April 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at the George Sims Community Center, in partnership with the Avondale Glen Elder Neighborhood Association and the Southeast Village Neighborhood Association. Come out and enjoy the fun. And then, finally, in the Elmhurst Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday, the 15th as well, they're starting off a little earlier, at 9:30 to noon at the Coloma Center. It's a potluck, so bring your potluck out there, and we'll be enjoying some fun and games in that back area at the community center. With that, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, council members, members of the public, city staff. Good meeting. We are adjourned.[1787.61]